Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Ms. Switchy.
What?
Uh, here.
I'm a little deaf.
Okay.
Um, I'm here.
Uh, Mr. McGurven.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Uh, roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Perez.
I move we excuse the absent council member.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second that we excuse the absent council member. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And then the next thing, we have a very special presentation this evening. And to Ruth Perez, our council person, and I think it's Mr. Wolf that's going to come and present it to you, so...
Thank you. Peter King, I'm CEO of the Association of Washington Cities, and thank you very much for taking a few minutes this evening out of your agenda for this special presentation. As noted in your packet, Councilmember Perez has achieved AWC's Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership, so I'm pleased to be here to make the official presentation. She joins Mayor Law, who's not able to be here tonight, as one of only 109 mayors and council members in the state that have achieved the Advanced Certificate. We have about 2,000 mayors and council members, and 109 of them have been able to achieve that. I might also note, Councilmember Prince has got the Certificate of Municipal Leadership, so he's on that, on that list as well. It recognizes four core areas that I think you all are familiar with, or certainly have as part of your duties, roles, responsibilities, and legal requirements of being an elected official, public sector resource management, community development and planning, and effective local leadership. The Advanced Certificate requires mayors and council members to go above and beyond the 30 hours that are required for the core leadership. They must earn an additional 30 hours, but then also have an additional six months of community service that's beyond what they're doing for the city. So, I know that you all have a heavy agenda and heavy loads for what you do here in Renton, but those that earn the advanced go beyond and have community service beyond the city limits. So, all city officials are automatically enrolled, so you're all in the program. You can check online to see your progress in participating in that. It's one of those programs that's very highly rated. We did a membership survey this summer, and elected officials rate it very highly, but we also found it's not as well-known as might otherwise be, so I would encourage you to take a look at the information. I brought a brochure, and certainly would encourage you to take a look at that. So, with that, on behalf of AWC, it's my pleasure to be here and give our sincere congratulations to Councilmember Perez for your achievement, your dedication for continuous learning, which benefits not only you, but Renton and the citizens that you serve. So, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was really ni- very nice. The next thing is a public hearing, and we have Angie.
Congratulations.
Good evening, Council. My name is Angie Mathias, and I'm here to do a presentation for the public hearing for the Wolfwoods annexation and the zoning of that annexation area. So, the annexation process is very long and drawn out, and you can see here, this Wolfwoods annexation has gone through all these steps along the process. Most recently, the approval from the Boundary, King County Boundary Review Board to go ahead and proceed with the annexation as proposed. So, now we're at the step of having a second public hearing for the zoning. So, the King County Boundary Review Board issued their closing letter for completed action on November 6th of 2018, so the annexation has been approved for final action. That final action would be the adoption of the ordinance as making that annexation happen. Zoning of annexation areas requires two public hearings. We had the first one when we did the 60 percent public hearing with the annexation process, and that was on June 24th of 2018. So, the location of this annexation area, it's at the eastern portion of our city, sort of up there near the urban growth boundary. You can see here in an aerial shot that it is, does have some developed parcels, but that it is approximately half undeveloped. Topography, looking at the slopes in the area, there are no regulated slopes. There's some areas between 15 and 25 percent, some smaller areas with 25 to 40 percent, but there are nothing, there are no slopes that would be regulated under Critical Areas Regulations. Streams, there is a creek called Greens Creek that runs through a portion of the annexation area. It's a type NS stream, which I'll elaborate further on, but that means that it does not contain fish, that it has seasonal flow. Then there's wetlands that are approximately 200 feet to the south there that you can see here, that are largely set aside in a tract. We always look at what the county has it zoned, and they have it zoned R4. And in our land use designation, it's designated as residential low density, which would allow RC or Resource Conservation, R1 or R4 zoning. So, this actually was pre-zoned in 1997, but we no longer have the R5 zoning, so that's why we're going through the zoning process again. We always look at our comprehensive planned land use policies to see how, what matches and how we should zone things. We also look at the purpose statements of the zones, which we'll look at on our next slide. So, Resource Conservation, that's for lands with significant environmental constraints that are not appropriate for urban development, and probably are suitable for environmental conservation or restoration, and that allows one dwelling unit per 10 acres. The R1 is also for land with significant environmental constraints, but has some development to develop at an intensity that would be compatible with the environment that's there, and would allow one dwelling unit per acre. And then R4 is for land that is suitable for housing with large lots, that's compatible with the scale and density of the surrounding area, allowing four dwelling units per acre. So, those purpose statements for those zones, the Resource Conservation Zone is very low-density residential zone with extensive critical areas, promotes compatibility with those critical areas, and then provides a separation between urban uses and critical areas or agricultural use. R1 provides residential uses of land with pervasive critical areas where limited development will not compromise those critical areas, and that's for large lot or clustered single-family development. And then R4 is a single-family use that is serviceable by utilities, that contains open space amenities, and serves as a transition between rural zones and higher-density residential zones. So, the Greens Creek, approximately 375 feet of it, runs through this area. It's a type NS stream, as I mentioned earlier, so it does not contain fish or fish habitat. It has intermittent flows, is seasonal, in which surface flow is not present for at least some or portion of the year. It is physically connected to May Creek, which is a fish-bearing stream, but this is, by our records, a non-fish-bearing stream. And so, if development were to occur, there would be a 50-foot buffer from that stream with an additional 15-foot structure setback. If development was proposed, they would be required to do a steam, a stream analysis, excuse me, and so that would determine for sure what type of stream it would be, as well as what that buffer would be. So, if it does contain fish, then that would be a larger buffer. And then the wetland to the south, we don't know what the category is. That would also have to be done as part of the development process, and the buffer would be determined at that point in time. So, there do not appear to be protected slopes within the area or in close proximity. The presence of a type NS stream and a wetland does not constitute excessive or pervasive critical areas, as characterized in the purpose and intent statements for the RC or the R1 zones, and in our comprehensive land use policies. So, R4 is the zoning that is being proposed. So, the administration recommends that we, that the first reading of the Wolfwoods Annexation Ordinance is approved for first reading, and that additionally, the ordinance assigning R4 zoning to this design, to this annexation area be approved for first reading as well. And that's all that I have.
Any written correspondence?
Uh, no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
And we have nobody signed up to speak, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Price. Price, Prince.
I move the council approve first reading of the Wolfwoods Annexation Ordinance and approve first reading of the ordinance zoning the area R4, consistent with the residential low-density designation.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Perez. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Angie. The next topic is administrative report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I have four items for you this evening. The first is, the mayor's State of the City address, which is planned for this Wednesday, has been postponed due to the mayor losing his voice. It has been rescheduled for February 28th at 8:00 a.m. at the pavilion. If you're interested in tickets, there are still some available, and you can purchase those by contacting the mayor's office. The Renton Elementary and Middle School Crossings Project has been selected for a $555,000 grant. This grant involves multiple crosswalk improvements, including the installation of rectangular rapid-flashing beacons at the three schools, Sierra Heights, McKnight, and Maplewood Heights are the three areas where we'd have those improvements at. The City of Renton is seeking candidates to serve on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. The board acts in advisory capacity on matters of particular interest to senior citizens in the Renton community. If you're interested in applying, you can download an application from the city's website or contact 425-430-6632, and have one emailed to you or mailed to you. Applications are also available at the Renton Senior Center. And lastly, the Public Works Department seeks your input during a public open house that the city will be hosting, featuring the Wells Avenue South and Williams Avenue South Conversion Project on Wednesday, January 30th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the downtown Renton Library. The event will be held in a large conference room, and this project will, is, propose to construct revisions to convert Wells Avenue South and Williams Avenue South to two-way streets. Questions about the open house, and the information provided there may be answered by the Transportation Division by calling 425-430-7380. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Audience comment, we only have one person signed up. If you'll come to the podium up front and just give your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes. And if you look, there's a timer there, it'll go green, amber, and red when you're through.
Okay. Jeff Deneen, 320 Smithers Avenue South, Renton, Washington. Dear Renton City Council Members, I would like to express concerns about the Renton Municipal Airport Master Plan. I attended the January 15th Master Plan Open House with the idea that the public would be able to provide input and express concerns with the plan. Unfortunately, I found opportunities to do so very limited. Since the airport is the property of the City of Renton, I would like to express my concerns directly to you. I live under the flight path of the airport, and have had airport officials tell me that the city should never have allowed residential developments in these areas. The only problem with that argument is that my house precedes the airport by a good 20 years. My biggest concern has to do with pleasure crafts. The large aircrafts have made significant improvements in noise reduction and fuel consumption over the years. Currently, the number of takeoffs of large aircraft from the airport is, in my opinion, manageable, and there has been efforts to restrict the takeoff time so that there is minimal impact on surrounding neighborhoods. I do have concerns on how changes in the master plan may affect these practices. Pleasure crafts, on the other hand, have not made, have not undergone the same level of improvements. There has been no significant reduction in the noise generated by these aircrafts, and they continue to use leaded fuel, a fuel that has been banned in most every application. I distinctly remember a conversation I had with a City of Renton official 30-plus years ago, who stated at the time that the Renton Airport was the most lead-contaminated airport in the State of Washington. Now, I don't know if that's true. I've asked the question to airport staff and have been told that no one knows of any lead studies at the airport. I did a quick Google search concerning lead contamination at airports, and found numerous articles. I've attached four, or left four, for your reading. They include "Living Near Small Airports Increase Lead Pollution Risks," "A Geospatial Analysis of the Effects of Aviation Gasoline on Childhood Blood Lead Levels," "FAA Fact Sheet: Lead Aviation Fuel and the Environment," and "California Center for Environmental Health's Groundbreaking Legal Agreement on Aviation Fuel." Lead is a well-known contaminant, and very stringent regulations have been passed to reduce exposure. I have even heard of people having problems getting their houses painted because of lead concern. Yet, we allow pleasure craft to fly over our heads, spewing lead exhaust to rain down on our gardens, yards, and homes. Not only that, where does the lead go? Does it just keep accumulating year after year after year? If so, when does it reach a toxic level? According to the FAA Fact Sheet, all forms of lead are toxic. I understand that airport issues are very complex, but I do know one thing, and that is, if I was generating as much noise as a pleasure, as a pleasure craft on my property, the City of Renton would be all over me to cut the noise. For my protection, the city and state imposes strict regulations concerning my use of lead in fuels and paints, but as a resident who is a neighbor to the airport, I'm expected to endure the very things that I'm regulated against. It seems like a very one-sided arrangement to me. But what is the most bothersome to me is that I see absolutely no incentives placed on pleasure crafts to make improvements like those made by larger aircrafts. Instead, we merely tell neighboring residents to just suck it up. I find it hard to believe that the city has no control over the airport. After all, why own something that you have no control over? I'm not opposed to change, but I do believe that the driver behind change should be to make the city a better place. After all, what's the purpose of any of this, if it's not to make a better city? There must be some creative ways that the city can influence positive change through the regulations of the types of fuels that are sold, the fees that are charged. There must be something, for in my mind, it is clear, it has already been proven, that with the larger aircraft, with the right incentives, tremendous positive change can occur with the way that aircrafts affect the environment. After all, if it's not the cities who's interested in lobbying for the health and safety of its residents, who is? I forgot to mention, the articles on the Googles, oh, I did mention those. So, anyway, so...
Okay. Thank you very much. Consent agenda. Does anybody wish to have anything removed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we pull item F.
Pull item F. Okay. Any other?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move that we approve the consent agenda minus item F.
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item F?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Yes, thank you. So, item F has to do with Orca cards that we purchased as part of our commute trip reduction program. This is exactly the same as we did it last year, and there's no reason we shouldn't be able to just adopt this right here rather than send that to committee, given that, and given the very, very full workload that transportation has in its upcoming meeting. So, with that, I'd like to move that council concur with item F.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we concur, the council concur with item F? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. And now, I gotta turn the page.
Unfinished business.
We got the consent. They're being economical with the paper. They double-sided it, so I didn't... Unfinished business, Ms. Switchy.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee has three committee reports to present. No, three? Yes, three.
Utilities Committee Committee Report, Northeast 16th Street, Jefferson Avenue Northeast, Stormwater Green Connections Project Agreement with KPG Incorporated. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with KPG Incorporated in the amount of $424,541 for design services and water improvements for the Northeast 16th Street, Jefferson Avenue Northeast, Stormwater Green Connections Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's moved in second that the council concur in the recommendation of the finan- Utilities Committee. I can't get away from my next question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next report is the Southeast 172nd Street and 125th Avenue Southeast Green Stormwater Infrastructure Design Project Water Quality Grant Agreement. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the water quality grant agreement, WQSWPC 2016-Renton-0058, with the Department of Ecology, to accept $250,000 in grant funds for the Southeast 172nd Street and 125th Avenue Southeast Green Stormwater Infrastructure Design Project. This, again, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Been moved in second that the council concur in the recommendation of the Utilities Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. The final Utilities Committee Report is the Heather Downs Detention Pond Water Quality retrofit project agreement with Lewis Burger U.S. Incorporated. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with Lewis Burger U.S. Incorporated in the amount of $111,600 for engineering design services for the Heather Downs Detention Pond Water Quality retrofit project. Again, signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's moved in second that the council concur in the recommendation of the Utilities Committee. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
That's it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Pavoni is not here. Mr. Corman?
And no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee has two committee reports.
Okay. Planning and Development Committee Committee Report, Startup 425 Interlocal Agreement. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to, one, approve the interlocal agreement between the cities of Bellevue, Isakua, Kirkland, Redmond, and Renton that will formalize the cooperative effort to support a robust entrepreneur and small-business ecosystem on the east side, and, two, authorize the mayor to execute said agreement in the same form, and commit $15,000 annually for 2019 and 2020 to fund Startup 425 management and day-to-day operations. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
Moved in second that the council approve the Planning and Development Committee Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. The, uh, the final Planning and Development Committee Report is regarding clarifying recreational uses as part of mixed-use projects in the UC Zone, which is the urban center zone. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to refer this matter to the Planning Commission to consider amending the regulations regarding recreational uses and mixed-use projects in the urban center zone. Be prepared and presented for first reading. I believe that means that the ordinance be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. Signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
Moved in second by Mr., moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Perez, that the Planning and Development Committee Report be approved, as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
That's it. Now, we go to unfinished business.
Legislation.
Legislation.
Oh, legislation. Oh, gosh, I can't read tonight. Legislation, and we have resolutions.
Okay. The first resolution is regarding the amended 457B plan. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting an amended Section 18 rollover contributions of the adoption agreement contained within the city's 457B Deferred Compensation Plan and authorizing the 457B Deferred Compensation Plan Committee to amend or update the city's 457B Deferred Compensation Plan, provided that such amendments or updates do not impact the city's budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted, as read.
Second.
Moved in second, seconded that the resolution be adopted, as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
And the next resolution is regarding the Trails and Bicycle Master Plan. So, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting an updated Renton Trails and Bicycle Master Plan and map.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted, as read.
Second.
Moved in second that the resolution be adopted, as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. The next one is the Startup 425 Interlocal Agreement. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with the cities of Bellevue, Isakua, Kirkland, and Redmond, entitled Interlocal Agreement, Establishing a Cooperative Effort to Support Regional Economic Development, also known as Startup 425.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted, as read.
Second.
Moved in second that the, the resolution be adopted, as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next, we have ordinances for first reading.
Okay. The first ordinance for first reading is regarding the Wolfwoods Annexation, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, annexing certain territory to the City of Renton. Wolfwoods Annexation File Number A17002.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Switchy.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Seconded, but moved in second that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The final ordinance for first reading is regarding zoning for the Wolfwoods Annexation. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing the zoning classification of certain property annexed within the City of Renton from R4 Urban Residential Four-Dwelling Units Per Acre, King County zoning, to R4 Residential Four-Dwelling Units Per Acre, City of Renton zoning. This, again, is the Wolfwoods Annexation File Number A17002.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Moved in second that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. New business, Ms. Switchy.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Speaking on behalf of you, the committee of the hall will be meeting next Monday, February 4th, at 6:00 p.m. In council chambers, we will be covering two topics. The first is Parks, Recreation, and Natural Areas Plan Update, and the second item is KC Metro Rapid Ride Eye Line Introduction. And then, for the Community Services Committee, we will be meeting on Monday, February 4th, at 4:30 p.m. in the council conference room. We have four items on the agenda, including Recreation Brochures Update, Aquatics Scheduling Update, Scholarship Program Update, and Emerging Issues in Community Service. That is all.
Okay. Ms. McGurven?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to announce the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, February 4th, at 5:00 p.m. in the council conference room. There are six items on the agenda. BEFA Lease Idem, Rainier Flight Service Lease Agreement, Adoption of Title VI Plan, WashDOT Acquisition of I-405 Northeast 44th Street Interchange, Airport Preferred Airside Alternative, and finally, emerging issues in transportation, including 608 Building of Northwest Seaplanes and PSC Hangar. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any committees to announce, but I will, we have received several emails regarding, smells and others around different parts of Renton, so I would like to refer this issue to administration, so they can check what is this all about.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. That will be it.
Well, Mr., who's answering for... Well, Mr., who's answering for taking care of me?
I am.
That is okay. Mr. Corman.
And no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, February 4th, at 3:30 p.m. in the council conference room, the finance committee will meet. We have five items on the agenda. BAT debt write-off, utility leak adjustment, LND, LTGO bond issuance, vouchers, and emerging issues in finance. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. What is the wishes of the council?
Move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.